All right, Mayor, it's 5:31, so we can go ahead and start the Granite Consoles should be running.
I know the sun is shining on my shirt, so I'm going to try and lean back. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 13th, 2020 Vista Consolidated Meeting. The meeting is now called to order, and the meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N-2920. In the event a quorum of the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage that's not corrected within 10 minutes, the meeting will automatically be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled evening meeting of the City Council. Any other items on the agenda that the Council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. So we now have a roll call by our City Clerk Cathy Valdez.
Please state your here when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Present.
Councilmember Franklin?
Present, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Present.
All members are present. Also, on the Zoom call are Patrick Johnson, City Manager, and Daryl Piper, City Attorney. Thank you.
Okay, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, may raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak by clicking the Raise Hand feature that's on your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the Agenda cover sheet. Staff will be lowering everyone's hand now to start the meeting, and we will announce when to raise your hand to indicate you'd like to make a comment on a specific item being discussed. You may only speak on an item once, and public comment is limited to three minutes. So with that, we'll have the approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening to the agenda.
Okay, the next thing is our Consent Calendar. The recommendations on the following Consent Calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by using the Raise Hand feature or by pressing *9 now. Items removed from the Consent Calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 11 consent items this evening, so would any of our City Council members want to remove an item? And I'm looking, not seeing anybody waving at me, so then I would...
Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
Do I have a second on that?
And Mayor, we don't have anyone who's raised their hand to pull an item.
Okay, that was my next question. Second from somebody?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin seconded. So with that, so we close the public portion. We have a motion and a second, so please conduct our roll call vote.
All right. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
That item passes unanimously.
Okay, with that, we have one public hearing this evening. The public hearing is to seek testimony regarding the availability of nonprofit service providers to provide transportation services for the city of Vista's senior residents. So Recreation Manager Rob Anderson will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the Raise Hand feature or by pressing *9 now. The speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rob.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The item before you is a public hearing to certify there are no nonprofits readily available to provide senior transportation services as proposed in an upcoming grant application. Next slide. The city is seeking grant funds from the Federal Transit Administration via Sandag for the Out and About Senior Transportation Program. Out and About provides transportation services to Vista's age 60 and older, mainly for medical appointments and shopping trips. Pre-COVID, Out and About provided almost 400 trips per month to local senior residents. The grants require the local agency to certify that no nonprofits are readily available to provide the proposed service. In mid-September, letters were sent to local nonprofit service providers. On October 1st, this item was also noticed in the Union Tribune and was posted on the city's website and at City Hall. The letter to nonprofits and published notice provided notification that the city of Vista intends to apply for funds through the Sandag Specialist Transportation Grant Program to support elderly Vista's through the Out and About program. Next slide. If there are no nonprofits present at this meeting who are readily available to provide the senior transportation services, the staff recommend the City Council close the public hearing and adopt the city staff recommendation. If the City Council adopts the staff recommendation, staff will return at the next meeting to seek City Council's approval to submit the application. Next slide. This completes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, do councilmembers have any questions? I don't, I can't see everybody's faces, so can we go back just so we can see? I can see people's, okay, there. Okay, now, do any of our councilmembers have any questions or comments on this? If not, I would ask for a motion, close public hearing, ask for a motion. But maybe first, wait, the City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that want to speak on this item?
We do not.
Okay, so then I'll go back to, I need a motion, I'm sorry. Councilmember Franklin?
I'd make a motion that we approve the item as presented by staff in both the public hearing.
Okay. Councilmember Green, I think I saw you trying to...
I'll second that.
I saw you trying to push something there. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And so, City Clerk, please conduct our roll call vote.
Thank you. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Um, yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, so with that, we move on to our next item, discussion item. We have one discussion item this evening, the Storm Drain Silent Second Loan Program, and our City Manager, Patrick Johnson, will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so using the Raise Hand feature or by pressing *9 now.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. At our last City Council meeting two weeks ago, the council directed that staff bring back discussion points on the Storm Drain Silent Second Loan Program for homeowners that are in need of financial assistance and relief to either repair or to replace a storm drain. And so, that's what we're here to talk about tonight. I did want to give you a briefing, though. You also discussed other items at that meeting two weeks ago, and that was for staff to look into grants that were available for homeowners, for the city to update our website, to talk about best maintenance practices, as well as to review our city code and make any necessary clarifications or cleanup that we needed to do for residents to better understand the code. And I'm pleased to report that our Engineering Department late last week had updated the city's website, and they put the best management practices or maintenance practices on the website for homeowners to better understand how do you, to maintain their storm drain pipes. And this information can be found on the city's website. It's under the Water Quality Protection section of our website. And we are still working on clarifying our code, and we are continuing to explore grant potentials or possibilities for the city. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. But for tonight, what we're going to discuss is the parameters for what could be a silent second loan program administered by the city. And so, I'm going to walk you through what's in your Agenda Report, which is requirements both in the Finance section and the Engineering section, which would allow the city to provide loans under certain conditions while at the same time protecting our financial and our legal responsibilities. So what I'd like to do is walk through the slideshow. It's the same information that you have in your Agenda packet. And for members of the audience that are listening on the phone, I thought what I'd do is read each of the bullet points and then provide some information with that. So if we could start the slideshow under Financing Requirements, that would be great. So as you can see there, similar to a solar program where the city would provide the cost to, of the improvement, a subordinated lien would be placed on the property that would be due when the property is either sold, a cash-out refinancing occurs, or title of property is transferred. So this means that if the city were to go forward with a program like this, the city would be paid back on our loan, could be anywhere from a year if there's a transfer, or it could be all the way up to 40 or 50 years depending on when the property is sold or transferred. Second bullet point there is although that the city will not be making a gift of taxpayer funds to applicants, the city will continue to pursue grant funding, and liens could be released with City Council approval if grant funds were legally allowed to be able to reimburse the city the amount of the lien. And as I said two weeks ago, the city will continue to pursue any and all grant funding possibilities. If the city were fortunate enough to receive award of that grant, and property owners could be reimbursed, we would definitely come back to the City Council and make that recommendation to the City Council to have the opportunity to pay those loans off if that was a possibility under the grant. Next slide, please. The property owner would need to show proof that they cannot qualify for a second mortgage with a bank or lending institution or a sufficient home equity line of credit prior to application to the city's Silent Second Storm Drain Loan Program. And this is a very important requirement. Since the city's not a bank, we are not a lending institution, nor have we in the past acted as a lending institution, the first preference from a staff perspective would be for anybody to obtain a loan from a bank or lending institution as mentioned. If somebody could not qualify for that for a variety of reasons, then they could approach the city for financing. And what we've been told by various banks that we've called and checked with, it's about seven to 10 days for people to go forward to the bank, do a loan application, and then if they get rejected, they usually find out within that seven to 10 days. The next bullet point there is the program would utilize the Emergency Reserve Fund for all loans. The maximum amount of the funding to be used for this program shall not exceed $2 million, and applications would be reviewed and funding provided on a first-come, first-served basis. So since we don't have a dedicated funding source in the general fund for something like this, I'm proposing to use the reserve funds with the concept that over time, the emergency reserve funds would be reimbursed. I do want to make note that our credit rating agencies appreciate the fact that our credit rating reflects the reserve of over 25%. And by committing $2 million to this or up to $2 million, this would maintain that 25% level and keep the credit rating agencies happy. Next slide, please. So, the maximum amount of each of the city loans would be $100,000 for a full system removal and replacement, and $65,000 or up to $65,000 for rehabilitation of the pipe with a structural liner. And the minimum loan amount would be $15,000. So the reason that we would want to put a maximum loan amount is to control the amount of money that we're loaning. And the second reason is because the amount of repair and replacement, those costs are likely to be at the high end of $100,000 and $65,000 for both repair or replacement and repair. So we felt it was necessary to put a cap on that. The next bullet point there says the overall loan-to-value ratio for the loans needs to be less than 100% of the property value, as stated in the appraisal report, which will be conducted by a third-party appraiser who has been procured by the city. And again, since we are not a loan agency, we do need to protect the taxpayer funds, and I would not advise loaning money to somebody that is upside down on their obligations to their home. That could jeopardize the city being repaid. My understanding is that banks don't go over the loan value of about 80%. So it would be the council's discretion on whether they wanted to do 90% or a full 100%, depending on what you're comfortable with. Next slide, please. The interest rate assessed would be the current rate at the Bank of America for a second mortgage loan at the time of the lien. And since we cannot predict the future whether interest rates are going to continue to go down or they're going to go up, we thought it best to tie it to an interest rate, what the market is at the time of loan. And so the rate charge would be a fixed rate, meaning the interest rate would be locked in at that time, and it wouldn't change. It would be a simple interest rate, and interest would be charged on a monthly basis. So as an example, if your interest rate is 3.6%, you would divide that into 12 equal monthly payments, and when you make your payment, you would be charged 0.3% on the available balance that you owe, very similar to most fixed-rate home loans. The next bullet point there says, the one, all fees incurred as part of this process, including but not limited to appraisal fees, notary, escrow, and title and others will be encumbered as part of the total loan or, yeah, total amount of the loan. And so basically, what we're saying here is whatever monies are spent to go ahead and fund this loan will be part of the loan. And this is the same process as a bank loan, and this way, there's no true gift of public funds. So that is the financing section, and then I'll review a few of the engineering requirements and then open it up for questions, comments, and suggestions. On the engineering requirements, the loan program requires that the entire pipe system on an individual property either be replaced or rehabilitated, which is usually referred to as structural relining. So if we're going to fund the cost of a replacement or a repair, we want the entire structure to be taken care of, not a spot repair, because we don't want to be, you know, five years, 10 years down the line, the property having that same failure again, just in a different location. The next bullet there is as part of the application, the property owner will provide an acceptable written report that will describe the condition of the pipe. And so this will need to be done by a civil engineer or a piping contractor who has inspected the pipe. And this typically done via video inspection, and where there is somebody that's taking the video and narrating for the video so that we can understand the magnitude of the issues within the pipe segment. Next slide, please. If the pipe replacement is necessary, then the property owner will be required to hire a professional engineer and obtain a city grading permit. The loan may also cover the cost of associated earthwork, such as slope repair, final slope stabilization, and planting and replacement of legal structures and legal property improvements. And the final loan amount for replacement will be based upon a comprehensive cost estimate. I don't think there's much more to say to that slide. Next slide, please. So for either pipe rehabilitation or replacement, the property owner would need to obtain three bids and have them reviewed for completeness by the city engineer prior to loan approval and funding and availability. And this will allow the city to analyze the bids, make sure that the work is truly needed, that the homeowner is not paying for things that they don't need, and that the work is proposed to be done correctly. So that would be one of the requirements. And the second bullet there is the pipe replacement, four pipe replacements, and depending on the length of the pipe, the final system shall include at least three cleanouts for future pipe access for inspection and maintenance. The cleanout locations shall be one at each end and one in the middle of the system. And this will provide for enhanced maintenance opportunities in case there are future problems and allow us to have better access. I will say that for pipes that are under probably 200 feet in length, it may not be necessary to do three, but we would make that decision when we see the pipe and the plans. But certainly for pipes that are over 200 feet in length, we would want that middle cleanout. And then, next slide, please. The property owner will be, and this is the last bullet point, the property owner will be required to sign a maintenance agreement and attestation acknowledging that the pipe is private and obligating the property owner and any successors in interest to sole responsibility of all perpetual future maintenance. The agreement will be prepared by the city and recorded against the property so that it appears in all future title reports. Once all requirements have been met and approved, a city loan would be placed in an escrow account and would be accessed by the contractor to fund the cost of the replacement or repair and replacement. And this way, the loan amount is paid directly to the contractor at different milestones as the work is completed. And so, that is, that is the proposal for the framework of a program that was requested at the last meeting. Myself, Daryl Piper, City Attorney, as well as Mike Silvy, our Finance Director, and Greg Mayer, our City Engineer, are here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this program. And so, we'd like to hear what you have to say about it. That concludes my presentation, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will go to the council and see if they have any questions or comments. You want us, do I just go all the way, I guess I'll go with all of you. How about we'll start, Deputy Mayor Rigby, we'll start with you, because I see you on the top up there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you to staff for this comprehensive plan, this report, and all of the considerations that go into it. This is not an easy topic. This isn't an easy thing for the city to come up with. And I appreciate, I appreciate everybody willing to have this conversation, because as we know from the last meeting and anybody who's been following along with me for the last seven or eight months, this is something that is affecting our entire city or has the possibility to, the potential to affect our entire city. Because if somebody is not able to fix the storm drain on their property, that the state and all subsequent cases indicate are private, and that has happened where people haven't, they don't have the funds to do that, that does impact our city as a whole as far as flooding and public safety and public health. So even though it's private and the state law and case law says that we're not liable for anything, I really, really appreciate my colleagues being willing to have this discussion, to take a, take a look at and see how can we help people get through these situations without them going bankrupt, without them losing their homes. And I appreciate it very, very much. And then also with the, the other items that we talked about at the last meeting that the City Manager brought up about being good partners, you know, our code says you have to do maintenance. What does that maintenance mean? What is the definition of that? And some of the other things that we talked about are now out there to have that conversation. It's on the website. There'll be more information coming on that. I think we're going to be publishing it in our newsletter as well. So I really do appreciate all of the work that staff has done to address the situation for both the residents as well as for the city. And then with this plan for the financial aspect of it, it protects the city, which is paramount, but it also protects or helps the homeowner, which also in another avenue protects the city. So I just want to say thank you for this, and I thank you for my colleagues for the consideration of this. And if you're looking for a motion, I would move that we ask staff to, I think you wanted us to see if we're going to come back with this for a fully vetted or fully formulated. I'd like to move that we approve this and have it implemented or come back as a full, I don't remember what you had said earlier, but for a full discussion on this particular. Did you need a motion?
Well, I just need to get direction from the council. And what we would do is if there's no major changes, we would bring this back as a formal policy to be adopted by you and go forward with it.
Right. Sorry, I thought that's what you had said. So I'm in agreement with this. I would like to see this come back to us as a fully vetted, fully baked policy for consideration. So thank you very much to everybody involved with this.
Okay, so then we go to Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm having some... Thank goodness for you.
Bless you.
I don't know if my microphone is working very well right now. I think the, I'm on a different microphone. I think this is a good solution. I think we have an obligation to do something reasonable to help these families. And I think this is a first reasonable step, you know, to make the city a lender of last resort to help people save their homes, to help them repair the infrastructure that's failing. So I'm supportive of it, and it sounds like we don't need a motion, but that's my, my opinion.
Okay, how about Councilmember Contreras?
Well, I just want to thank staff as well. This is a very thorough kind of agglomeration of all the things we talked about the last meeting. And in going through it and speaking with Patrick, this is, I believe, the best solution that we can bring forward to our residents here in the city of Vista. I definitely don't want to be in a position where we're taking responsibility where we don't have to, and where that could potentially put us in a very dire financial situation. So, you know, making sure that there's no gifts being made of taxpayer money, being the lender of last resort. I agree with 100% of the property value. This is really, really well thought out, and I am 100% in support of staff's recommendation here. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Green?
All right, so I also want to thank staff as well for putting this together. I'm on my phone, I'm having computer issues, so hopefully you guys can hear and see me, okay? My only issue with it slash question is the CLTV, which is the combined loan-to-value aspect of it. Going to 100% financing in the event they have to end up selling their house in the future, there's just fees and things when you go to sell a house. And I don't know if that would mean as the second lender, we would be forced to take a short payoff. So, you know, if we're not saying it's our responsibility and it's an actual loan, I don't know what we could do to really ensure that we actually get our money back. And when you loan, you know, relatively what seems to be a cash-out refi to 100% loan-to-value of a property, it just makes it tough to get your whole investment back. So that's my only concern. I'm assuming staff has done the work. I don't see a bunch of people refinancing their home to 100% to fix the storm drain and then selling it right away or anything. But I do just want to make sure that we're at least cognizant of the fact that if we finance a property to 100%, that that leaves no room for escrow fees or title fees or prorated taxes or any type of additional fees. They would actually have to short sale their home, which would be another situation for us as the city to approve a short pay. So if they owed $100,000, we might need to approve a payoff of $70,000 or $60,000 in order for them to be able to sell their house. So that's only my concern. I don't think it's going to be a huge concern with, you know, a ton of loans coming in, but I do want to make sure I at least put that on record so maybe staff can get back to the council with that and kind of what that would mean for us financially if we did finance to 100%. But aside from that, it's a great program. It's a great relief for the community. And my prayer is that we'll get grant funding and we'll be able to relieve these loans in the future. So that's my take on it. Thank you so much.
And Mayor, if I could, Councilman Green is correct on the 100% mark. And that's why I mentioned in the presentation that the council would want to go to 90% or 95%, which would give some clearance entirely up to the City Council. But it would be good to have that direction this evening, so that way, when we put together the policy and the resolution, it's framed as you'd want to see it.
Okay, and I guess my major concern is why I didn't want to give a gift of public funds to some people. You know, I think that I don't want to do that. So I think that this is a fair way to do that. And I don't want to put our emergency reserves at risk. That's the other thing that I, those are my concerns. So, and I apologize, you guys. For six months, I've sat in the same place, and the sun has moved. I'm fighting the sun tonight. I'm like, I can't believe it. So I promise I'll move the computer next week, your next two weeks, next meeting. It's just I keep finding the sun shining on me. So with that, I need to know, City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that want to speak on this item?
We do not have anyone who's asked to speak on the item, so we'll close opportunity to speak at this time.
Okay, now, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Rigby. Do I have a second on that?
There was no motion needed, Mayor. I think we have clear direction on the policy, but I would like to, if we could informally poll each member on the 100% loan-to-value, or would people be more comfortable, members be more comfortable with 95% or 90%, so that way we can get it right when we bring the resolution forward at the next meeting, hopefully.
Okay, so I guess I'll go through each person, and they can let me know. So Deputy Mayor Rigby, are you okay with 100%?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am. And I agree. This was very, very thorough, very comprehensive, very thorough. So I'm in agreement.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin?
So does that mean that the homeowner would need to obtain an appraisal prior to the issuance of a loan?
That's correct. That's correct.
You know, I feel like I'd be more comfortable with 90%. You know, I think that would make more sense, leave some assurance for the people listed that they're going to, maybe it would be made whole in a default. But that's, that's my thought right now.
Okay, Councilmember Green?
Yeah, I would be comfortable with 90% as well.
Councilmember Contreras?
I'm okay with 100%.
And I feel better with 90%. I just worry that 100% is like the full value of the entire house, so I'm loan to value, so I'm not sure that, although with the prices of houses, how they're increasing right now, I think we probably wouldn't have a problem, but, you know, you don't know what's going to happen in the future. So I think I'd be more comfortable with the 90%. So, so we could compromise and go 95.
I'm okay with 95.
I would be okay with 95.
Okay.
I was already compromising at 90. I was, I was starting with me, but I wanted to be generous and take some risk. You know, I, we're, we're already substantially exposed to a 10% deficit, so, because that's, in most cases, not going to cover our, our costs in that situation, so. But I was, I was with you, Mayor, I was thinking about, you know, we are in a time of rapid appreciation, it's likely that with a 10% deficit plus whatever appreciation, it might be okay, but I really feel I'm more comfortable at 90.
You know, I like the compromise of 95, but we'll, we'll see what Councilwoman Contreras, you already said you're okay at 90.
She said 95.
95, yeah. I mean, I want, I want 100, but I don't think we're going to get that, so.
Right. So I'm good at 95.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
So we're all set. Okay, so with that, you don't need to vote on it, right? If you need to vote on that, no, you're okay with all that. Okay, so that, we're, oh my gosh, where, I lost my, where I was here. So with that, we're going to move on to oral communications, right? Are we that, are we that far along? Okay, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda, related matters that are not on the agenda. If any members of the public wish to address the city council, they may indicate so by using the raised hand feature or by pressing star nine now. So City Clerk Kathy Valdez, do we have any members of the public that want to provide oral communications?
I don't see anyone yet. We should probably give them a moment to raise their hand if they'd like to, so bear Okay, I don't see anybody, so we'll go ahead and close oral communication and the opportunity to speak.
Okay, well, that takes us to our remarks, and I, I will read my little, my, my little news remarks here. So the city in the chamber have introduced an electronic gift card program calling the Vista Bucks, they're called the Vista Bucks, to support local businesses. And I read about this, I think it was in San Diego, it was very successful. So you can purchase gift cards from a list of restaurants, breweries, retailers, retailers and services, and gift cards go on sale October 26th. So check vistasopen.com for details on that. And if you're an active voter, you can register to track your mail ballot status to find out when the ballot is mailed to you, when the registrar of voters receives it, and when it's counted. So learn more about that at sdvote.com. And due to last week's success of Fright Fest, the Moonlight Amphitheaters are offering two additional Halloween themed films next week, featuring Ghostbusters on October 22nd and The Nightmare Before Christmas on October 23rd. Health and safety precautions are still in place, as well as a limited capacity. Movie schedules and ticket information are available at moonlightstage.com. So that is my announcements for the day, so I will go through the rest of the council, and we'll start with Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff for all the work that you do for us, and you really, you really earned your pay on this one, I just want to say, and the city manager, thank you for your help on this. And anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what you said about voting, Madam Mayor. I want to remind all of the voters that the governor, in his infinite wisdom, has closed many polling places throughout the state and consolidated polling places. What that means is that for many voters, they will arrive at a normal polling place to find it closed. They will then be diverted to their super polling place, where there could be a long line because of consolidation. So I'm urging everyone to return their ballots to the county library system in San Diego, to the registrar of voters, or other authorized drop off location, or to return your ballot by mail as soon as possible to avoid the, what is going to be likely a disaster on Election Day. Don't get caught up in it. Vote early, get your ballots in so that they get counted. Thanks.
And I think the Vista Library takes the ballots here in Vista. I think they accept them in Vista, so. Okay, Councilmember Green?
All right, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I kind of have a little bit of a longer report back this time, so bear with me here. I serve as the vice chair of the Regional Solid Waste Association, which handles all trash requirements here in the county. And when I got elected in 2016, Governor Brown signed a new law into effect, SB 1383, which had to do with organic waste recycling. And it scared me real bad, because when it was established, it indicated that 50% of organic waste needs to be reduced by 2020 from the 2014 level, and 75% needed to be reduced by 2025. So when this law was passed four years ago, we were obviously, you know, freaking out about how we were going to meet those requirements. Since then, they've really crafted this SB 1383 requirements a lot better for city jurisdictions. And as of January of 2021, our residents are going to start getting educated and basically required to recycle their organic waste. So all of your leftover food, your produce, your chickens and bones, any type of organic waste you could think of, is now going to be put in your green waste receptacle as opposed to your trash waste, and we're going to start recycling that. Ed Cohen Escondido has made what's called an anaerobic digester, and all of these organics that are collected are going to be recycled and turned into renewable natural gas. So all of our organics is going to end up fueling their entire fleet, which is great. So we're trying to get to the whole zero waste footprint here in the county, but there's six different requirements with SB 1383. I'm going to provide the slideshow that was provided to me at the last meeting to all of the council members, so you guys have a copy of it. But the six phases are that we're going to have to provide organic collection services, which we already have that, that was the big thing, is where are we going to take all of this? So in Escondido, if you go out there on Washington Avenue and Civic Center, City Center Parkway, you'll be able to see this huge dome, and that's where they're going to start recycling it. We also have to establish an edible food recovery program. So they say there's enough food in San Diego and in California to feed everybody, it's just a matter of getting it distributed and getting it in the right hands. So as a city, we need to figure out how to do that. We need to conduct education and outreach to the community. We need to procure recyclable and recovered organic products. We need to secure access to recycling and edible food recovering capacity, and we also need to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. What this means is that January 2021 is when we start. In January of 2022, we have to report back to the state that we've met all six of those guidelines, all six of those requirements. By January of 2024, the state will start enforcing and fining cities that haven't met those requirements and diverted that organic waste. So we need help from all of our residents, our entire council, that we have to start diverting more organics. We can't just throw it in the trash anymore. We got to start recycling that and reusing that. So the Regional Solid Waste Association meets quarterly, and in January or February of next year, I want to say we're scheduled to meet again to kind of implement some more policies, but this is happening at the residential level. So as you guys start sorting through your trash, know that you're going to need to sort out your organics pretty soon. So SB 1383, check it out, get excited about it. That's all, and thank you, staff, for all your work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Contreras?
Well, I just, like, all my colleagues, want to thank my coworkers on staff for their hard work. I want to thank, you know, all y'all, members of the council, for a great discussion and for moving forward with some solutions that our residents really need. Outside of that, I just want to let everybody know that this Friday, I'm, I'm teaming up with the League of Women Voters, North County, San Diego, and we're doing a town hall for Vista, going through the pros and cons of the ballot measures that you'll, you'll find in your ballot. So if you have any confusion, it's a nonpartisan way to go through, ask some questions. You can find the event on my Facebook, which is @representVista. And again, it's this Friday, and it is from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. And as always, we have trash pickups every Wednesday. We meet at 9:00 AM at Los Duran Park. Not sure if I'm going to be able to make it tomorrow, but if you can, my team captain will be at Los Duran Park. Thank you so much, and, you know, we're ending early, so I don't know if Joe's going to be able to get his Taco Tuesday, and it seems pretty good for him.
He can eat extra tacos. Catherine Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of notes. One is our playgrounds opened to the public last week, so the state allowed for the guidance to allow for us to open them with certain procedures and protocols, which we have posted at the playground sites, and more information can be found on our website, but we're happy that the playgrounds are open. They've been closed for a long time, as you all know. One thing, Mayor, we gave you some bad information, and that is, I think we mixed the dates up on the films that are coming up. So I wanted to let you know that Ghostbusters is going to be on the 23rd of October, and Nightmare, Nightmare Before Christmas will be on the 24th. So I wanted to.
Okay.
And then lastly, I just wanted to congratulate our assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman, who will be approved tonight by the city of Rockland as their next city manager. And so this is a very well deserved and exciting opportunity for Ally. For those of you that, obviously all the council knows, but for those of the public, Ally's worked for the city for 18 years. She's the assistant city manager, and she's done a tremendous job for the organization and for the residents of Vista, and so we're definitely going to miss her. She's not left her job yet. She's leaving in November, I think November 12th is her last day, but I did want to publicly congratulate Ally for getting to be the city manager of Rockland. It's exciting for her, and she's definitely, definitely deserves it. So thank you.
Okay, so city attorney, do you have anything?
Good, good.
Who'd I miss here? Our city clerk, Kathy Valdez?
Thank you. I would like to announce that we are recruiting for student commissioners. We had to postpone due to all the COVID and the closing of the school year, so we're going to recruit. They'll only be able to serve about half a year, but we want to make sure they have the opportunity to do that. So we have applications available, it's been going out to the schools. Applications are due October 25th, and they can contact me if they have any questions. Thank you.
With that, now the sun has gone down. Now we can adjourn our meeting. Okay, so we're all adjourned, see you in two weeks.